Yeah, I can. Yeah, so I'll just have to send it to you. Okay.
We're after the meeting.
Okay.
Whenever it's ready.
Sounds good, thank you.
Alright, sounds good.
Oh, man, oh, man, oh, man.
Hey there.
Kerry, it looks like you're at a forty-five degree angle there.
Yeah, it's an old picture. Normally, I would not be using my personal account. But I had trouble opening the assessors Zoom account. And so did Grace, so she had to log on and give me host permission on my personal account.
Ah, okay.
So I unexpectedly spent the whole day plowing people.
And didn't get to read those minutes. Are they short enough for us to to look at at the meeting?
Um, yeah, I believe so, let me. Like I said, the only ones that were kind of long were the one from September, and let me open up that really quick so that way when we do look at them. So. Hello.
Hey there. Kerry, it looks like you're at a forty-five degree angle there.
Yeah, it's an old picture. Normally, I would not be using my personal account. But I had trouble opening the assessors Zoom account. And so did Grace, so she had to log on and give me host permission on my personal account.
Ah, okay. So I unexpectedly spent the whole day plowing people. And didn't get to read those minutes. Are they short enough for us to to look at at the meeting?
Um, yeah, I believe so, let me. Like I said, the only ones that were kind of long were the one from September, and let me open up that really quick so that way when we do look at them. So. So, yeah, the September twenty-seventh one is about three and a half pages. Um, and the just had open, where is it?
Maybe I'll defer to my to my members if they've read them and and believed them to be accurate, maybe that's that's fine.
Okay, and yeah, the and then the one from our last meeting was was less than two pages.
Okay, seven o'clock. Get some members signing in here. We can't do anything unless we're all here because of the special permit. There we go, there's John. Hi, John. Okay, just waiting for Mary to show up.
He should be coming. I called her last week before I scheduled this to make sure that she could come to the state. She said yes, so.
Glad to see you're not running this meeting from your truck cab, Jeff.
I I had a lot of plowing today.
I'm sure you did.
Boy, it was, it reminds me of that Simon and Garfunkel song, that flip sliding away.
To be sure, that was a wet mess.
Yeah, I mean, the old orchard was the easiest one of all, of course. And all the rest of them, I was like hanging on for dear life.
Oh, man, I can only imagine. Yeah, you needed buckets more than we're gonna plow for that thing. But, I mean, it's, hey, did the job mostly. It's, we're still sloping around a little bit, but not not like we expected anything more.
I didn't, I I didn't do, I didn't do the damage I feared today. A little, but not that much.
Yeah, yeah. Yep, yeah, we we are too. Well done.
I actually bumped into somebody's house the other day.
Oh, my gosh.
Close quarters and knocked something loose, so that's a free job for them.
Well, I guess it's it's always amazing when it doesn't happen more often, right? I mean, you're working in some pretty adverse conditions, so.
Yeah, some of the quarters are pretty tight. I mean,
Yeah.
I mean, the old orchard seems like, it it seems like big sky country. But some of these things are just like little, little, you know, here and there, and then you got a backup and move around and and you've got buildings and fences and cars, people without garages who have cars all over the place.
Then you've got, you've got areas that are not well lit, you know, and you or you know, even after you do them a couple of times, it's not like it's your own backyard and you're super familiar, you know. Yeah, and then a little bit of snow or rain coming down to obscure your vision. Yeah, you're better you than me, Jeff.
Yeah, I I was actually plowing at the same time as, what's his name, who does my old house? Buzzy or Bud, Bud Kellogg.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We we were in there at the same time, and we were actually teamed up and we did a little dance together.
Oh, nice.
He'd push it one way and then I'd push it off the other way and
Oh, wow.
We did a little, a little co-plowing.
Wow, that's kind of cool.
Yeah.
Flowers unite.
That's right. We're, we're one, we're a few, few members of a special breed of
I guess.
Of cowboy out there. Oh, boy. Well, seven oh four. Yeah, unfortunately, on a special permit. We can have a meeting, John, with the two of us.
Yeah.
Uh, two out of three, but we can't do anything on a special permit without all three of us together.
Yeah, yeah.
So we could, we could review the minutes, we could do education guidance, we could do public comment. We could even, yeah, do a lot of things, but we can't do a special permit without.
I I have her phone number, so I think I'm gonna give her a call and
I wondered if that was, yeah, made sense.
True.
So who whose little car was that that was stuck out in front of the Cedar Pride?
Well, I'm I'm not sure, but if it was a little car, it probably was Sean and Kate's.
Yeah, it was like a little, a little silver thing, a little
Yeah, that's that's theirs, that's actually it's for sure a hybrid, but I think it might even be an electric.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's that's why they are so they're just so hot to get the driveway done ASAP, you know, I guess they've used Bud for years.
Yeah.
But it's like they they can't even move. You know, if they don't have their driveway plowed right away and
Well, I I'm a little familiar with their driveway.
I guess you are.
And and it's an upseat.
I know it is.
You're going up.
I know.
And then you're continuing up when you get on the road, so
Yeah.
A lot of up before you ever level out or go down.
I know, mine's an upseat too, but yours is about twice as long, a little bit steeper. Yeah.
And as soon as you get out on the road, you can turn left and 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 build up ahead of speed.
Right, yeah, yeah. Well, both both their cars are extremely low clearance and not much, not much pep.
Yeah.
You know, and, you know, so they got to be pretty savvy or and or have a pretty well cleared roadway, so. Yeah, they're they're the ones who are always the most hopeful for for an early plowing.
Well, you know, we've had Priuses since two thousand and four.
Yeah.
I have found those to be just great in the winter. We used to put studded snow tires on our first Prius that we had.
Yeah.
Because you have an engine and a motor in the front.
Yeah.
Sitting right over
A lot of weight on those wheels.
Dry wheels.
Yeah.
It it's a very good car for traction.
Yeah, no, Laura, daughter Laura, had one of those and, you know, tool her out for men for several years, you know, and just had again, as you say, pretty good luck. The way the weights distributed really seems to work well, even without, I don't think she even necessarily I don't like she even puts snow tires on that thing. And she was getting around okay, you know, but.
I I don't even get snow tires for my Prius anymore because i- if the conditions are at all dicey, I just have the trucks.
Well, there you go. Yeah, exactly. Save, save, save your money on Prius tires because you're gonna have plenty of places to use it on truck experience.
Right, right, oh, yeah.
Following her, I unfortunately didn't get an answer. I just copied the invite link to our meeting and I just emailed it to her, maybe if she was having any trouble.
Okay, so so you called her on on one of her phones and she didn't answer?
Yeah, I was gonna maybe try again in another two minutes, see if I could get her, I don't know.
Okay.
Kerry, did I hear you say you just spoke with her recently about?
Yeah, so last Thursday, I can't remember, it was last week, I want to say either Tuesday or Thursday, I'm leaning more toward Tuesday. I had called her to confirm what date would work best for her, and she said that Thursday, the twenty-sixth would because the twenty-fourth is her birthday.
Oh, yeah.
I said, okay, and then I scheduled the meeting and she, I mean, she emailed us for the ZBA earlier.
Right.
Saying about tonight.
Right.
So that's why I'm a little confused.
Maybe her clock stopped sometime in the last, over the last couple outages and she's not working on the right time.
I hope that's not the case, so.
Can't imagine.
Well, people are losing power. I I guess Penny Jake's in the neighborhood lost power today.
No, we all did.
Oh, oh, everybody, okay.
Yeah, we we lost it last night and then it came on around seven thirty in the morning, thereabouts. And then we lost it again for just a short time and the word was that there was a transformer that was down and maybe even on fire up near Mary Lou Conca's house. So I, but that was resolved very quickly, if that wasn't fact what it was. But yeah, just so so two, two relatively unobtrusive outages. Did you get anything over there at Baker or were you, are Kerry?
I'm sorry?
Did you, did you have any outage during the storm?
So I actually don't live in Shrewsbury.
Oh, that's right, that's right. I I knew that, I knew that.
We were out for about twenty-four hours here. And the batteries kept us going during the day. We 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 lost our about nine in the morning, eight thirty or nine, and the batteries kept us going for most of the day.
Yeah.
Even though the panels were covered with snow, you know, the diffuse light that was getting through them was was still juicing up the battery. But later in the afternoon, when the sun swung around to the west and wasn't really hitting the panels, then the batteries gave out.
When, how how old are those batteries that connected to that system, Jeff?
Um, you know, they're probably, I don't know, over fifteen years old.
Is that right? And they delivered that kind of staying power? Wow, that's amazing.
Yeah, I've I've been thinking about upgrading them.
I guess, it must, they must be much better now.
Yeah, well, and the panels are much better now. I I'd be like an electric company. I have forty panels. And, yeah, I mean, they're they're old and inefficient, but, I mean, still, my electric bill used to be about fifty dollars a month, average. For this whole place, which is, you know, the the barn and everything and
Yeah.
And, you know, so that was pretty good. It 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 would pay for it for in a couple, for a couple of months. Um, the whole thing, but average about fifty bucks. And and that's that's pretty good.
It is pretty good. It's, well, yeah, I mean, especially for an old system. We have, our panels have been up on the roof since two thousand, I guess, the beginning of two thousand fifteen. You know, but even then, it seemed like the batteries were a real question mark as to whether or not they had enough holding power to really make them worthwhile, so the fact that you're getting that kind of uh, delivery on battery storage, you know, from an old, from an old set like you have, that's pretty impressive.
Well, the great thing about the batteries is if
Here comes Mary David, woo.
Oh, there she is.
Woo-hoo.
There we go.
Mary's the master of suspense. She keeps us waiting.
I'm sorry, at the last minute, I was asked to sit on the Personnel Board talking about a position and I wasn't tracking the time well enough. I I apologize. I told him I had to leave by seven to get on here and then forgot the time because we were having such fun in our discussion.
Well, good to have you here, Mary, but we were, we were occupying our time well, so. Chit-chatting about this and that, so.
All right, well, I'm gonna call the meeting to order at seven twelve. And I I'm trying to memorize the agenda. I believe the first item is public comment. I don't see anyone other than board members and the clerk, so we'll skip on to education and guidance. I don't see anybody who needs education and guidance either. So then I think the next item is our minutes that Kerry has prepared and my intention was to read those minutes today, except I was in my truck all day, uh, plowing, so I didn't do it. If if my other members have read them and are satisfied with them, I would be I would be willing to 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 vote in favor of them if or or we could put the minutes off, I guess, until the next time we need.
Right, which we talk about one from some of the twenty seventh of September and and then the more recent one in July, or excuse me, January fifth. Are we gonna take them one at a time or?
Yeah, the 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 first one was our, was our organizational meeting, the first time.
Right, right.
We didn't have any cases. And then the next meeting was our first case where we had the public hearing for Parkin.
Right, right.
So, sure, let's let's take up let's take up the first set of minutes from September.
I I read them and, yeah, Kerry was very thorough. I think at some point I read that she really wanted to kind of have this one be more uh, fleshed out because it didn't contain a lot of good uh, instructional information for the record, you know, for for how things are done in the ZBA and so, yeah, there's, it's it's a very, it's a very thorough accounting of what was said at the meeting and I I find it to be fine, just just fine. It's a great job, as a matter of fact, Kerry. That was a lot of information to kind of process. The only question I was asked is, I mean, it's like as in all things like this, I mean, you made far fewer typos than I would, but there are a few there and stuff. Do we really need to get into the weeds on this or is it kind of like just more of a general sense of yeah, things look really pretty solid and not worry about little miniscule things?
Um, I mean, if they're small typos and if um, everyone's comfortable with me making typos, he can always move that they be um, the typos be corrected and approved.
Yeah.
I'd assume.
Yeah, there's, I mean.
And I looked at the minutes too, and I thought they looked good. I didn't really per content wise. But yeah, I agree, I agree, we could, you could always approve them and just say approve with correcting of the typos.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
So how would that a correction be accomplished? Would would John relay his edits to Kerry after the meeting and she would make the, she would make the correction?
Yeah, I I think if they're just typos, like spelling errors, which I unfortunately known to do.
Me too.
And now they're not substantive, then I think that should be fine.
Okay, so don't worry about that, yeah.
Sometimes I don't of them unless they, unless they change the meaning. I mean, if if you're, if you're, if you're dealing with bylaws and statutes and things like that, you know, little commas can change the meaning of the whole sentence.
Exactly, yeah. There was, there was one, there was just one that I think might be a a little confusing, not not to change, even though, again, it's it's a fairly minor part, but in the, it's the paragraph that begins with Lacy. And then it's it's about ready to discuss the fifth function. Uh, it's on page two, about two thirds of the way down. Uh, the the fifth function of the is chapter forty B, you know, the state's affordable housing. And then it goes on to say Shrewsbury does not have ten percent of their housing stocks in affordable housing. Affordable housing means housing that is affordable to and I think what the next section wants to read is those who do let's see. It says those who do not make, but I think it's those who make uh, only eighty percent or less um, than the area median income. I I think that's, I think that's probably the what was intended there, Kerry, but you can correct me if I'm wrong on that.
I I I think I said it and what it what it should say is households making less than eighty percent of the area median income.
Okay, there you go. That makes it even, yeah. Yeah.
So those who do not make eighty percent or more, it's sort of what this, what it should say.
Why don't you revise it, Jeff?
Who make households that make less than eighty percent of the area median income. That's for the purposes of the forty B, the Affordable Housing Act, that's that that's the the line that they have right.
Yeah.
So, John, do you think the minutes?
No, that was, that was the only, that was the only head scratcher. Everything else, you know, you can easily see that it's just, it's just a typo and it's not, it's not gonna get in the way of the meeting, of the meeting at all. I think it's pretty remarkable how how well it captures it. I didn't realize I talked so much during the meeting.
So so John, do you want to get with the, with with Kerry offline here on those typos to have them corrected?
Oh, okay, did I understand that correctly, Kerry? Because I thought you were saying if it's just typos, let's not worry about it.
Well, I would like, I can fix the typo, so do you have them on paper or do you have?
Well, they're on paper now, but I suppose I could, I could send them to you if you want them.
Yeah, I could do that and then I can change them.
Yeah, yeah.
So then we could make a motion to approve the minutes.
Yes.
Uh, with the typos submitted by John.
Yeah, yeah.
Do I hear it? Was that a motion, Mary?
Yes, yes.
Do I hear a second?
I guess I'd better second that.
Okay. Any further discussion on the, on the first set of minutes? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Alphabetically, John Airstock.
Aye.
Let's see, Mary David.
Aye.
And Jeff Lacy is an I. Okay, are we prepared to move on to the second set of minutes, which was our last meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Again, I I did not get a chance to read them today, but I will defer to my members if you have and if you'd like to comment on them or make a motion to approve or.
The only thing I have on that one is that we, on the back, on the second page, where we've stated the next meeting date, it was going to be January seventeenth. But obviously, it's changed to the twenty-sixth, so I guess it makes sense to make that change in the minutes, right?
Yeah, so I was, I was thinking about leaving it and then in this meeting, I was gonna note that the other meeting wasn't able to happen on that date, therefore it got moved to today.
That's even more accurate, okay.
Yeah, that was, yeah, that was what was said at that meeting, so that's what
Gotcha, yeah, yeah.
What we knew at the time.
Yeah.
So I'll move to accept the minutes.
And I'll second that.
Okay. And further discussion on the second set of minutes? Hearing none, call roll, John Airstock.
Aye.
Mary David.
Aye.
And Jeff Lacy is an I. Very good.
Good job, Kerry. Thank you.
Thanks, Kerry.
Alrighty, so let's see, Kerry, what's next? The 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 Parkin? The Parkin.
So I just had one quick question. So when I was reviewing what minutes were still due for my town government and such, I had talked about this briefly, is that there was a a set of minutes missing from June fifteenth of last year, and I wasn't able to attend that meeting, so I know it was still you Herb and Damari, so I wasn't sure who took those minutes, so I was curious if you had known who, so I could email them and ask for them.
Ooh, boy.
Digging deep.
I can I can try to find out, let's see.
I believe that was for, if I remember correctly, of fourteen Lake Drive. Or there, there was two applications going on during that time. It was fourteen Lake Drive and I can't remember the other application.
What was the day again?
Uh, June fifteenth of last year.
June fifteenth. Twenty-two ZBA. So you were working then, right? But this
I was working, but I wasn't able to attend. He, Damari had already discussed when that meeting was and unfortunately, I wasn't in that conversation, so I wasn't able to attend, otherwise I would have told him that I couldn't attend it and asked for a different date, but.
Okay. Let me research that a little bit.
Okay, nice thought, I bring it up.
I'll I'll call Chuck and see if he recalls what we did.
Okay.
Okay, shall we move on to, to the parking decision? I I wrote this based on not a vote, but a a sense of the of the board. And my sense that I got was that the decision should be in approval. And it should be based on what was discussed at the meeting, so that's the way I wrote the decision. And let's see, I can put it up if we need to share it. Or if everyone's happy with it, we can just we can vote on it or we can review it. Whatever, whatever members would like to do.
So I didn't have any questions. I thought it, it looked good for my first time looking at it. It made perfect sense to me.
It it looks good to me too. I I think it captures exactly how we came about the decision and yeah, the the only thing in this case, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be the the date themed again. And this one, we probably do want to change the decision date to tonight. Right?
Right, because I probably had it for that next
We had it for the seventeen, so we do need to try to change it for the twenty-sixth for the, for this paperwork.
So Kerry, can you give me ability to share?
Yes, I can. So for some reason, I am unable to make you a co-host. Are you just looking to share the findings that you sent?
I was gonna edit the document right before our very eyes.
Okay, um, so I am going to make you the host, if that is okay, because for some reason I'm not allowed to make you a co-host, which I normally would do. And I think that's because of how this meeting opened, so once I can make you host, I don't have any power to do anything with this meeting.
Careful, Jeff.
Yeah.
I mean, could I open it and edit it?
Yeah, you bet. I I've sent it to you, so.
Let me just, yeah, if hop on over and see if I can find it. So we're just looking to change the date, right?
Yep, decision date. Yep, decision date.
Let's see. Decision. Okay. Okay, I should be able to edit it now, send it back. Oh no. I have somehow lost you guys. Oh, there you are, okay. Sorry, I have so many things open on my computer right now. Okay. Nope, that's the wrong thing. Okay.
So Carrie, really, all you have to do is um. Just, just correct the date a- and uh, i- if we vote to. Approve the decision, then. Oh, look at that.
Okay, sorry, I have like so many things open on my computer right now. It took a few minutes. Okay, here we go.
Ta-da.
So decision date just gets changed to today, it has. Okay. All right. Um, it, so if we're all happy with this, uh, a- and. This is reminiscent of many decisions that I've written for the zoning board. I've written them all since I've been on the zoning board. Um. Uh, site plans and special permits. Um, I, I, I'd love to train someone else in how to write decisions. We have a nice template and um. And I could certainly help them. Um, I was happy to do it with the other ZBA because I was not the chair. I didn't have any chair duties, so I was the decision writer. Um, but um, so anyway. Both of you might wanna keep that in mind. If you'd like to get into writing decisions, I'd be happy to. Uh, slowly transition out of that at some point, but. But anyway, um. Do I, do I hear a motion to um, approve this special permit? Um, in accordance with this decision that's been written.
I'll, I'll move that.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a, have a motion and a second. Um, any further discussion on this case? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. John Airstock.
Aye.
Mary David.
Aye.
And Jeff Lacy is an I.
Well, um, one procedural question is, is the next step in notifying people of the approval? The um, the, does the, did I read somewhere where abutters get a chance to appeal yet again? It, and that happens before it goes to the um. To Bruce in this case, the, the, the homeowner, or is it the other way around? Is it simultaneous?
What happens now is um, is Carrie prepares it. I come in and, and, and sign it for the board. Well. We should probably vote on that. Um, w- we had voted to allow Chuck. Damari, the previous chair, to, to sign all these things for the ZBA, once it's been voted on. So now we, we don't have to all sign our name.
Okay.
The chair can sign. Um, so I, I, I go in there uh, to the town hall and I sign it, and then. Carrie trans- uh, emits a copy to the town clerk where it sits for twenty days pending any appeals. And she, she also um, sends notice out to the abutters. So if they don't like the decision, they have a twenty day period in which they can appeal it.
Mm-hmm.
And after twenty days, the town clerk signs that it hasn't been appealed. And then it goes to the applicant and um, to the registry then.
Ah, okay, that's, okay, got, got that, yeah.
You have to get through that twenty day appeal period.
I see. Yeah, that was the, that was the question, whether or not, yeah, he had to wait. For that time for the abutters to have a chance, okay.
Um, so do, do I hear a motion to allow the chair to um, to sign these permits? Uh, on behalf of the board, provided they're, they're approved by the board?
You mean.
Do you ever, do you do a lot electronic signatures? Cause for the COMCOM, we do, we, we do electronic signatures and just say. With that um. Poll everybody at the meeting and say, yes, you can sign my, my electronic signature.
Yeah, so I, I'll, I'll just go into town hall and sign the thing. Um, and, and go to the library, go to the post office, go to the co-op and.
Is, is this, is this uh, request, Jeff, here to for, or is it just regarding, it's okay for, so for me?
Going forward, so we don't have to round up everybody's signature and I can just. Sign for the board. It, it's, it's just carrying on what we did before. And, and, and I, I don't mind going in, in, in doing that, I. Gets me off the farm, so.
I'm, I'm okay with it. Are you good, Mary?
Yeah, so I make a motion that we let Jeff, we approve Jeff to sign for the commission.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion on that? Here, hearing none, I'll call the roll. John Airstock?
Aye.
Mary David.
Aye.
Jeff Lacy is an I. Okay. So Carrie, I, I will come in and see you. When's the, the, the next time you'll be available?
So I'll be there on Tuesday.
And, and what are your hours Tuesday?
Uh, typically I'm there from like ten to one, but more than, more than half the time I'm there later.
Okay.
Or I stay later, I should say.
Okay, so if, if you can have it ready for me, I'll, I'll come in and sign it and then we can get it to the town clerk and um. Send it out to the abutters.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, great. Okay, we've completed our first case.
Yay.
So, under the last item, um, unanticipated business, it, it's. Well, it was anticipated by me, but not by the rest of the board, but. Uh, I, I wanted to bring something up just for us to think about a little bit. Um, not act on right away, but. Um. We do. We do three, three main things. The, the big thing we do, where, where, where it gets, and it's special permit, is down at the lake. When houses get torn down and rebuilt, when additions are made, when they go up. Those are um, special permits. Uh, with hearings and testimony and uh, pro and con and, and th- those are involved in cases. Um, and then we do two simple types of things. Um, one is a site plan review for. Um. Uh, ground mounted solar panels that people put up at um, in, in their yard. So it's not on the roof. We, we don't get involved in that permitting, but it's, if it's on the ground. Um, they, they have to meet the setbacks for an accessory structure. Um, but what we do is a little site plan review. We just wanna make sure that. Um, that installation is not sticking in, in the neighbor's face and um, ruining their life. So that's pretty much what, what we do on those, a- and it's a lesser review than a special permit. The third thing we do is a special permit for these kinds of things that we did tonight. It's where um, um, attached or detached accessory structure is proposed. Um, a- and it doesn't meet some setback, front, side, rear. Um, and that's a special permit. And. What we're looking for is similar to what we're looking for with the ground mounted solar, is it. To minimize any impacts on the neighbors, make sure the neighbors are okay with it. Because it's, it's um, it's closer to the property line than it otherwise would have to be in Shrewsbury. Um, but. Special permit is uh, is a five hundred dollar application fee. Um, there's two public notices that go out in the paper. It gets sent to neighboring towns. It gets mailed to all the abutters. Uh, there's a public hearing. There's twenty step checklist that Carrie has to follow, lots of things to do. It, it's, a special permit can be a, a big involved deal. And it's the same kind of permit that we would require for a solar farm. The Wheelock Solar Farm was a special permit with the same twenty steps. Um. And um, you know, the, the same process, the hearing, and we do that. For these little sheds that, that people put close to the property line, so. My, my question for the board to think about. And we should probably think about it as we do a few more cases, maybe of each type, is. Do we really? Wanna stick with a special permit for these types of things? Or do we possibly wanna back it off to a site plan review like we do for the ground mounted solar installations? One thing, the one critical difference is we have less authority with a site plan review. It's hard to deny. We can condition them. Um, but we can't out and out deny them. These things like we did tonight, we could just deny it. Um, quite easily. So. If, if we did what I'm suggesting we think about doing, we would be giving up a little authority. In, in favor of. Simpler, less costly, less involved process. So probably.
So I have a question, which actually goes back to the one that I asked earlier. Um, so, wh- the thing we reviewed today, I, I, we also looked at it on the conservation committee. And the last time, we also looked at a ground mounted solar. On the conservation committee. Um, how do, how do those interlock? You know? Do they give feedback to hear for that, uh, you know, or?
Uh, and a special permit, I believe they are mailed. Carrie, correct me, I, I, I think they're one of the, the boards that gets it.
The, so for special permits, there's, um, I'm given a specific. List of what boards I am to inform when a special permit is to arrive, and that does include the conservation commission, which. Uh, for this case in general, I believe. I did the same day. Um, the application was received, which was. The twenty-ninth of November.
And, and Mary, your question is, is, do the boards also see it when it's a site plan review? Is that, is that your question?
Well, or, or how does the process work? Like, obviously the conservation committee looked at this project in regards to where are there any wetlands around it? Not, not how close it was to the neighbor's property.
Right.
Um, so it's a different look that you're looking, but.
Yeah.
I think some of the projects, they do look at them too, and if you went to. How would that work if you went to a, a different process?
Um, I, I'm, I'm, I have my zoning board, uh. Bylaw right in front of me. I'm trying to see, well, there, there, there's no public hearing. There's no notice to abutters with a site plan review. Um. There could be, we could build that in. We could build in a notice if we wish. Site plan review is not covered in state law. It's entirely a home rule process that we can design ourselves.
Mm-hmm.
Pretty much, so. So we could, we could actually have noticed to all the abutters. Without necessarily a formal public hearing, it can be noticed to the abutters, so they know. When we're gonna be discussing it, and we could allow them to speak during public comment or just during the. The discussion. So we could, we could um, create a hybrid process if we wish. Make sure that abutters have some input.
But it wouldn't have, it wouldn't have to be notified like a public hearing or something like that. It would just be, they'd be invited basically to a. Regular old meeting.
Yes. It, it wouldn't be a formal public hearing where they have a, a guaranteed right to speak, or if we let them speak.
Yeah.
Um. But it would still be mailed the notice to all the, all the abutters, but it wouldn't go in the newspapers, which is costly.
Yeah.
Wouldn't be a five hundred dollar application fee. It would be a lot less, cause. We're not spending all that money put, putting it in the paper. It wouldn't have the um, it wouldn't have the twenty point checklist. There would be, there'd be less. You know, less to worry about. I don't think it would have an appeal period. Um, you know, that, that's all covered in section nine point two of our zoning bylaw, the. The site plan review.
Yeah.
So I, I don't have time to. Read and refamiliarize myself with it tonight, but nine point two is site plan review, nine point three is special permit.
Mm-hmm.
So you can compare those two sections.
Yeah.
That's a good thing.
Yeah.
Okay. I have a quick question.
Yeah, please.
Sorry, um, Jeff, do you happen to have the checklist in front of you for site plan review? Just cause I feel like I believe, if I remember correctly, I think the, like, other boards are still in um. Are still informed when a site uh, plan review is received.
I, I have it, Carrie.
Okay.
Hey, you're saying the site, the site plan, um.
Yeah, it should say other boards are, are uh, notified. I think they have to give like thirty days. Before the hearing or something like that.
Yeah, I, I don't have that checklist.
No, I don't. Oh, yes, it do, yes, you're right. Copies sent to other boards.
Okay, then, yeah. So that would include, that would include other boards similarly, like when a special uh, permit is received, it also goes to other boards like um. Other towns around us, the five towns around us as well.
The, 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 the towns wouldn't receive it, but, but some of our other local boards would.
I think both, if I remember correctly.
It doesn't say anything about the towns here, but um.
I, I don't think it says, I don't think explicitly says, but like when I was talking to Linda during her, my first time, she had explained that. In the piece, in the piece of paper that she gave me, that I think. If, I think if anyone has to be. When it says boards, I think it also includes not only boards within Shrewsbury, but like other planning boards around us, so it should be. Uh, New Salem, Pelham, Wendell. Um. Leverett, and I'm forgetting one, and I don't know which one it is, but.
Mm-hmm.
I mail them out.
Whatever it is, it's, it's, yeah, it's both in the site plan and, or, and the um, special permit.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's, it's similar in some ways to a special permit, but, but it's, it, it's a lesser review and, and uh. The big difference is, well, there's a number of them. Um, we don't need to, we don't need three out of three to approve them. We can approve them with two out of three.
Mm-hmm.
Um. We don't have, there's, there's no public hearing or advertising in the paper, that's a lot less expensive. Um. And I don't believe there's an appeal period at the end, that's.
Mm-hmm. Um.
Is that.
Well, that's, so it, so if I was in a butter, how would I know that we're looking at a site plan?
You, you, you wouldn't, um, unless we modify the process to uh, to uh, include that.
Notify abutters.
Yeah, so.
So like, so in the one we just did, then he wouldn't have had to ask the neighbor. It wasn't okay for him to uh, build his shed closer.
Not if we, not if we do it just like site plan review is written now in the, in the bylaw, no. The neighbor wouldn't necessarily know. But we could change it so that they are notified. And have an opportunity to attend the meeting when we discuss it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, specifically, I think I would be in favor of that notifying neighbors uh, as part of a, a new. Process for the site plan. I mean, my general sense, Jeff, is I mean, I would wanna kind of. You know, bow to the expertise, the experience of those who have done, you know, a thousand of these and just kind of know what, you know, what seems to make sense. I mean. You know, the last thing I wanna do is have, you know. More bureaucratic steps, you know, that are necessary to really ensure the process goes well. And it sounds like you're saying, in the most instances, you know, these little. Setback variations and stuff, really just, they're the same. Kind of process really, and they call for the same level. Of investigation, for example, as a, as a solar system, but not, not something more involved like you might have down at the lake. With a special um, permit. That said, you know, it's. Making it a simpler, uh, less checked process by making a site plan type, type of review. Is good until it's not good, unless, until suddenly something, you know, creeps under that. That you're, you're, you're kind of regret, that you wish you had the more extensive process. And I, and I guess I, I just don't have enough expertise or experience to know if that really is something we should be safeguarding against. You know, some, some unusual request of that, of that type, or. Whether it's like, no, this is the way it goes, and let's just kind of make everybody's life easier.
Well, case law in Massachusetts says that um. The, the only way you can, can deny a site plan review. If it's truly set up as a site plan review, um, is um. And it's a prudential case, if you wanna look it up. Um, is if. Um. Let's see, there's three prongs to that, and uh, one is if the application is, is incomplete. They, they just, they haven't submitted a fee, they haven't. Uh, you know, the, the, the application is just not there, it's not complete. Number two is um. Is if they violate um, some um, uh, clear line in, in the zoning, they, they. They, they don't meet a setback or, or uh, dimensional. Uh, clear line in, in the zoning. They, 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 they don't meet a setback or, or a dimensional requirement, you know, so you, you, you've got them on that, it's uh. And number three, which is the most interesting one, is if the project is, is impossible to con- to condition to be of, to be acceptable. So i- if there's just no way to condition it, cuz that's what you can do with a site plan review, you can condition it.
Yeah.
So, you know, they're hard just to say no, but you can put a lot of conditions on them.
I see.
Like, if it's too close to the line and the, the neighbor objects. It, it's kind of difficult to say no, but what you can do is have them plant. Vegetation in between the two properties, or, or put up a fence, or um, you're, or reorient the building, or. Paint the building in a um, in a neutral color, or, you know, some other thing that um. Ameliorates the um, ameliorates the problem.
Well, what, what happens, for example, if you have a set twenty-five foot setback, for example, and they wanna go in another. You know, you know, they wanna encroach, you know, seven or eight or nine feet or something on that, and it. Really isn't acceptable. It's just, for no, for no other reason, it's just too damn close or some, or something like that. It's, it's not like sticking. The condition of a hedge or something like that is gonna fix it. You know, it's just feels too close. To a neighboring property. I mean, how, how do you handle that if you can't deny, you can only condition?
You, y- you can take the third prong of the prudential analysis and, and, and say, there is no way that this project can be conditioned. To be acceptable.
Okay, all right, okay. I guess I didn't understand that.
End of the, of, of zoning bylaw. Special permit, you know, if, if, if neighbors come in and object, you, you barely have to give reasons why you're denying it.
Uh-huh.
So anyway, that's, that's the difference, you know, the site plan review is, it's, it's um, it's almost by right, you know, you, you, you kind of presume to get a site plan review. You may have to, you may have to um, modify your plan a little bit and adhere to some conditions that are imposed. But presumption is you're, you're gonna be approved. Special permit, you have no such presumption of approval. You're going in there and um. You know, it, it, it might not fly, and. The board doesn't have to bend over backwards to explain why it doesn't fly.
Yeah, my only concern is uh, seeing how many people. Do slide things through once they figure out how we've been slighted through. And, and, and how we can assure that we have a way to not let that happen.
And it sounds like you're saying we do have the tools, Jeff. It's, it's just we have to kind of exercise them a little differently. Than we do with the. With, with the whole writing of the um, of the special permit regs.
So who decides whether they have to do special permit, or they can do um. Do the, do it different, do a site plan review? How do, how do we?
The, the, the way to modify it would be to go into section four point two dash two. Which is what we're operating under here and uh, change it from. Special permit to site plan review. And.
But how do you define what that encompasses?
Yeah.
Within that same section, um, it, it would, it would say notwithstanding what's in nine point two, the site plan review section. All abutting property owners shall be notified um, of the application and. And of, of the date. Of the meeting of the zoning board when it shall be discussed, something like that. You add that in there so that. For that particular class of, of projects, you've, you've, you have site plan review plus. Plus a little bit. You've, you've, you've included the, the uh, the abutters.
But I think what Mary might be asking though is, you know, what, what is the distinction? Between something we're gonna now call a site plan that clearly happening down at Lake Wyola would be a special permit? You know, how, how? What's the nomenclature that kind of makes it clear to someone which one they're applying for?
Well, I mean, this particular thing that, that we do a lot of, this, it, it's, it's all in four point two dash two. It's this. Non-habitable accessory structure. These are sheds, barns. Um, you know, e- even extensions of houses that are not habitable. So it's not part of the living area of the house. You can't live in it. It, it's a shed, garage, storage building, outbuilding. That's covered in that section. Um, normally, these would require a zoning variance, but we made it a little easier. By the, the special permit.
Wow.
A- and, and there's some standards right there. It's just a sentence worth of standard um, that they have to meet. So if we wanted to change it, that, that's where we would change it. Instead of saying special permit, we'd say site plan review under section nine point two. Um, except that. Abutters uh, must be notified of, of the application and of the date of the meeting. And whatever other things we wanted to do. If we wanted to customize the site plan review even further, we could.
Well, Jeff, um, I'm, I'm, I just wanna say I'm open to this. Uh, it, it, it kind of makes sense to me. Um, for a number of reasons, and does it? Does it seem like the kind of thing that we don't, it's, it's not an emergency, there's no rush for this, but. If, for example, you were to take a crack at maybe doing a revision of the language in the pertinent sections. And then at a subsequent meeting to kind of take a look at that and say, oh, yeah, that's, that looks, let's take it again, or.
Yeah, we, we, we could review that. Maybe, maybe what we wanna do is um. Not do it immediately, like for this. Upcoming town meeting, but go through a couple of these cases. You know, the, the solar panels with site plan review or something else that we do with site plan review.
Yeah.
And a couple more special permits. Get the feel of, of, of what they're all about, and then, you know, come back at it next year if we wanna make the change.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, sounds good. I'd like to like read these a little closer and see if there's any, what the differences are, but.
All, all I wanted to do tonight was to get you.
Mm-hmm.
Thinking about it.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Sounds good.
Yep.
Hey, any other unanticipated business?
Not that I can anticipate.
Okay, then.
I don't think so.
I, I, I will, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconding the motion.
At uh, seven fifty-three.
That's what my clock says, yes, seven fifty-three. So um, I'll call the roll. John Airstock?
Hi.
Mary David?
Hi.
And Jeff Lacy is an I. Okay.
Great. Thank you for waiting for me.
You're worth it.
Thank you. Won't happen again.
We have no more meetings until something comes up and, and.
Okay.
Carrie will let you know, okay?
Sounds good.
All right, good night.
Okay, good night, everybody. Take care.
Hope my power stays on now.
Oh, yeah.